My days at Brockport undergraduate, which is not far from Buffalo.
No, no, I was born and brought up in Hamburg and Orchard Park. And if Orchard Park sounds familiar to you, the home of the Buffalo Bills.
Okay, so we are now live and we are being recorded.
Great.
So with that, welcome to the March 7th, 2022 Lincoln County Planning Commission meeting. At this time, let's call the roll.
Madam Chair.
Here.
Commissioner Fox.
Here.
Commissioner here. Doesn't appear to be here. Commissioner Lambrecht.
Here.
Commissioner Spolnick. Commissioner Spolnick.
Bill, can you hear us?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm here.
Commissioner Cutler.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Stratton.
Here.
Commissioner Bougainhagen.
Here.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have a quorum. Okay, are there any items from the public that are not on the agenda? And how would they tell us that?
Well, presumably, they would have given us something in writing in advance. That's really the only way that that could could work under these circumstances, so.
Right, okay.
And we have, I don't, right, Megan and John, we haven't received anything, so.
No, to the best of my knowledge, we did not receive anything for the meeting tonight, outside of what is already planned for the reconvening of the proceeding.
Okay, okay, well, with that, tonight, we are reconvening a live virtual electronic proceeding on case file 14 dash C dash PC 21 to consider a quest by Schooner Creek Transfer Incorporated, Lon French, the agent, for a conditional use permit to expand the operating characteristics and hours of an operation of an existing solid waste transfer station known as Schooner Creek Transfer Station on property zoned IP that is planned industrial. The applicant is proposing construction of a new 35-foot-tall, approximately 14,000-square-foot steel transfer building with an 80-square-foot office, widening of the existing approach at 246 South Anderson Creek Road to accommodate 24-foot-wide self-haul route, 12-foot self-haul inbound and a 12-foot-wide self-haul outbound. This is a tongue twister. And installation of a gate, installation of inbound and outbound scale house and scale, construction of a stormwater facility to accommodate additional impervious surfaces, construction of approximately a 16,800-square-foot of asphalt paving adjacent to the new building proposed, development of a self-haul scale path, construction of a bunker and hardscape for inert gravel and dirt disposal, and development of trailer storage for two trailers approximately 30 by 60 feet. The applicant is also requesting to expand the existing permitted operating hours for the transfer station from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, to 5:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. To go over the proceedings to date, since the initial hearing, which was on January 10th, 2022, the hearing was closed, the record was left open until January 24th for new evidence, until the 31st of January for rebuttal, and February 7th for final argument. The Planning Commission reconvened on February 14th, and per the motion that was passed by the Planning Commission during this proceeding, the record was reopened until February 21st for rebuttal of new evidence presented by the applicant in its final written argument that was submitted on February 7th, and for parties to address the ex parte contact brought up at the proceedings, and until February 28th for final written argument with no new evidence. And so here we are on March 7th, 2022. At this time, I'd like Assistant County Counsel Jerry Herbage to go over a memo that was given to the Planning Commission relating to some evidence and some submittals that we've received.
Thank you, Chair Bobbitt, and thank you to all the Planning Commission members. I prepared a memo in advance of this hearing. I'd like to go over it briefly. I'll read through it and then just make a couple of comments. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them. The memo indicates that the purpose of it is to address procedural issues regarding the Schooner Creek Transfer Station CUP hearing, which is 14C 21. As you may recall, on Monday, February 14th, 2022, the Lincoln County Planning Commission convened and passed a motion to reopen the record for an additional seven days until February 28th, 2022, for a very limited purpose, for rebuttal of new evidence presented by the applicant in its final written argument, and for response to the ex-party information received by Commissioner Stratton. During the ensuing open record period, the Lincoln County Planning and Development Department received two submittals that were timely received within the seven-day window. One was a letter from Ken and Marcy Martin, and the second, a letter from Craig and Pam Wojcik. I've reviewed both documents and find that they represent new evidence and argument that is outside the scope of the motion made and approved by the Planning Commission on February 14th. As such, the testimony is not rebutted to new evidence presented by the applicant in its final written argument or comment to the disclosed ex-party information. For that reason, when you convene, I recommend that you consider a motion to exclude both letters from the record of the proceeding, in which case you could not consider this testimony in your deliberation. Another option would be to pass a motion to reopen the record for a third time, in which case a new testimony would be allowed into the record, and parties would be afforded an opportunity during the new open record period to submit testimony in response. I would not recommend this option because we could find ourselves in the same position again with dealing with testimony outside the scope of the Planning Commission's motion. This point in the process, we need to bring along the proceedings to meet our timeline requirements for making a decision on an application. I say, should you have any questions regarding the matter? Please ask, maybe just a few additional comments regarding this. What is, is, as the chair indicated, there was also a window for another submittal from the applicant of final argument, and that didn't happen. That wasn't required, but it was an opportunity, and that didn't happen. So you're not looking at that. And, and my concern is simply the motion that you made on the 14th was very specific. It was to, the problem was, is that, you know, the applicant, when the applicant submitted final written argument, it really wasn't final written argument, it had new evidence. And it sort of was, instead of just arguing, I should win, because it was really a lot of testimony on the various documents that the opponents had submitted, and there was new stuff in there. And so really, the direction in the motion from the Planning Commission was to address that. And what we got was a little bit different in those two items, and that's why I have submitted this memo. And it's up to the Planning Commission to decide what you want to do with this. So if you have any question, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I think I've expressed my position.
Thank you. At this time, does anyone, do any of the commissioners have any questions before we decide on a motion, one way or the other? Okay, I am seeing none, so in that case, if there is a motion, one way or another, I don't know if we want to, you know, if there's any discussion if we agree or not with County Council's argument. But at this time, we either need a motion to not include those last two letters in our deliberations, or we need to reopen the record again to allow limited testimony.
Okay, Terry Bougainhagen here. I think we need to consider the last two letters as not so much as additional information, but maybe clarification. So my motion would be, would be to consider the last two letters that have been sent to us and make a further deliberation down the road.
Okay, is there a second on that motion to reopen the record and go from there? Hearing none? Is there a motion for the other direction?
My name is Misty Lambrecht, and I move that we exclude the last two letters as I believe that the parties had ample opportunity before to submit that they did not, so.
I would second that. Terry.
Okay, you have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Okay, let's call the roll for a vote.
Oh, before we, we do that, could I have a quick clarification? Is it, I mean, I understand what you said is that they had plenty of time before, but is it also recognizing that you did make a very specific motion? And, and that it appeared that these two letters kind of went beyond what, what your motion on the 14th was?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is that okay, Terry?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm with it.
All right.
I wanted to get it out there, so one way or the other, we, I think we have it out.
Okay, so let's call the roll for a vote.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Fox.
Yes.
Commissioner here. Absolutely, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lambert.
Yes.
Commissioner Spolnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Cutler.
Yes.
Commissioner Stratton.
Yes.
Commissioner Bougainhagen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion has passed. So that leaves us then right into, we're going to not account, not consider those two letters, and we're going to start deliberations on the remaining records and information that we have from the previous meetings. Who would like to start of where they are thinking? Misty, do you have a hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to, do we have to ask again if there's any more ex parte?
We should, yes, thank you. Does anyone since the last meeting have any ex parte contacts or anything to add to the order here? Nope, okay, we're good. Thank you, Misty, for reminding me. All right, so commissioners, given all the information, and I trust everyone has gone back over the staff report, the original submittal, and have an opinion on where we are. To just clarify that, you know, they're asking for new buildings, they're expanding thing, expanding the buildings, they're wanting to widen the road. They want to put in a stormwater thing to account for some of the surfaces. And in the operations can be a little bit different with the self-haul being allowed in and out, and then the new hours proposed. So those, that's our kind of just a general summary of what they are asking for. Let's.
Because Madam Chair, the, the, the self-haul used to be across the road up the hill, and it's being consolidated at the, at the main site, yeah.
Right, which is why they're asking for a little bit of road change there.
Right. So this is Jerry for the record, just you, you're right, so really, what you're going to do is deliberate to approve or not to approve this application. But apart from that, remember that in the staff report that you've reviewed, there are nine recommended conditions of approval, and the ninth one has to do with the hours of operation, which seems to be, you know, a major topic during this matter. So if, when we get to the point of a vote, I think it's important that you also address the conditions of approval, and particularly where you stand on the ninth one.
All right, yeah, so that is page, on page 10 of the staff report. If you want to go and review that. And I, I was, I had a question as staff on the report that I thought I had read that there was new fencing or something with the stormwater thing, but then I didn't see it on any of the map submittals. Did I pull that out of thin air, or was that not part of the new?
Well, there, the, the, the existing facility has a stormwater, and there was testimony with their, with the, the engineer from Mal Foster that was working for the applicant, that the, there was, there was an existing stormwater facility on site, but it's going to be expanded to accommodate the additional impervious surfaces and roof structures from the, from the reworked facility.
Right, and there's not, but there wasn't any new fencing or anything, or land berms or trees to obscure that? I thought they proposed that, but then I didn't see that. I guess it's not really.
I, I don't, I don't recall, I recall that, I recall just making sure, they were making sure that we knew that there was an existing one there, and that it was going to be expanded to meet the, the additional flows required from the additional impervious surfaces. So there wasn't any, we'll fence it, or we'll obscure it, or anything like that. That was, that was the.
Okay, all right. Um.
Yes, I'm basically in favor of this proposal, except for item number nine. I think down the road, if they absolutely can't operate without those real early hours, they should come back before the Planning Commission. But they should try all other avenues available to them. You know, I, I live within a mile of two quarries, and, and and they, and their time is like 7:00 AM, and, and, and that, anything earlier in that, you know, it, it's just too hard on the residents, unless they're, unless you get up at 5:00 AM in the morning. And I'm an early riser, but I, I, I get up at like 6:00. So anyway, but the, the thing I look at is, okay, if it's not here, where else is it going to be? And they've been here, and they've been operating, and yeah, there, there's three neighbors that don't like it, but it is what it is, and, and but to ask for that 5:00 AM start is, I, I just can't go along with that.
Right, and I believe we heard testimony from the applicant that that is actually not needed right away, and that is with a future, a future need they were anticipating, so. Any other commissioners?
Yeah, Terry here. So the, Phil, your motion would be that we not consider the hours being expanded. We would stay with the 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM hours that are currently in the plan?
Your moot.
Excuse me, my, my proposal would be not to include item number nine, which allows for the earlier time.
Okay, I, I think it would be good to clarify if the desire is to have the current hours to put that in. Yeah, maintain, so I think that was a good question, Terry.
Yes, and I would second that motion with that consideration.
I think, I don't know if Phil made a motion.
I didn't make a motion, I just stated my opinion.
Right.
I'll make it for you then, with the stated hours not being considered an option, or an item number nine of the staff report.
So your motion is to approve this application, give it, with all the additional, with the the items listed in the staff report excluding number nine and keeping the original hours.
Madam Chair, you've got two, you've got two electronic hands up, though. Do you want to move, do you want to move to accept a motion right now before?
Right, we can still discuss once we have a motion.
That's true, that's true, I'm just making sure you see them.
Yeah, I see them, okay, so that's Terry's motion, and okay, Liz is second it, but now it's time for discussion, Misty? Yep, what would you?
I wasn't first, but I'll go if you.
Okay.
I don't want to butt in line.
I didn't see whose hand was up first, that I did not catch.
You know, I, I live in a rural area, and, you know, as a, as a whole, we don't dictate the starting times of loggers who start at 3:00 in the morning. We don't dictate the time the train leaves the George Pacific Mill at 3:00 AM. And I don't think that I feel comfortable dictating to them that they can't open at 5:00 AM. There's other things that are going on in that area at 5:00 AM. There's totally surrounded by timber property. There could be logging at 3:00 AM. We're not going to dictate to them what time they open, what time they start, what time their trucks drive by. I just don't feel like it's our place to tell them what time they can, can't open. So I would, I would be more inclined to say that they can open at 5:00 AM, and I understand that they said in their testimony that they would make every effort to not expand that beyond what they absolutely had to.
Okay, all right, Shailen.
Um, regarding that particular instance, the, the logging and so far are not asking for conditional use. They are, that is already built into their ability to do pretty much what they need to do. I the, several of the neighbors complained about the noise, both from the trucks that were entering and leaving the facility, and due to the operations on the site. And I think that we do need to accommodate the increased need for operations, but a 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, that they currently have is generally, I think, a useful timeframe. However, somewhere in us, that I read, they talked about extending their hours to 7:00 PM. And so I would recommend that we approve a 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, operating time, rather than the 5:00 AM to 6:00 PM that they have currently requested.
Okay, the motion on the table is to, though, right now, is to have the hours from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, which are their current operating hours.
Yes, yes, I think, I think that motion is, is premature.
Okay.
With the motions on the floor, unless it's withdrawn.
Right.
I don't think I'll withdraw it at this point.
Okay. And Liz has seconded.
Liz, you withdraw your second.
Yes.
You are withdrawing the second, okay?
Yes.
So Terry, you, do you still have your motion on the floor? So do we?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so is there a second to Terry, or? Anyone want to second that? Shailen, do you have something else to say?
Of course. I, I'm going to kind of address several things, and then we can get on with it. So that was my comment on the, on the noise issue. The, they, there was a lot of comments about dust, and so I am going to recommend that they, as a condition, they pave all onsite roads and proposed roads with, with a wide apron at the intersections on the South Anderson Creek Road, and that they not use chip and seal, but to actually use asphalt paving. And let's see. There was comments about the dirt and trash on the road. So I'm going to recommend that during construction, the entrance and exits on to South Anderson Creek Road will be cleaned of dirt, mud, and debris daily. And following completion of construction, the entry and exit points on to South Anderson Creek Road and the debris along the boundaries of the property with the Anderson Creek Road be cleaned weekly or more often as needed after storms. I'm also going to recommend that all public loads, the self-haul loads, being delivered to the transit station should be covered to limit debris along the South Anderson Creek Road. And let's see. Oh, there was a comment regarding the potential contamination of groundwater from stormwater runoff. And I would recommend that a quarterly water analysis of the Martins' Well be performed at the transport station's expense, and at any time foaming is observed at the well site or in the adjacent streams and ponds. And one more, that the transfer station increased the height of the berm and plant additional non-invasive evergreen trees and shrubs on the berms along the north and east sides of the property line to additionally decrease noise, block visibility, and filter dust for lot 700. And that's it.
All right. Um, Terry, is your motion still standing, or do you want to consider any of? Oh, wait, Phil, you wanted to go say something next, I'm sorry.
I, I was just saying, if we're following Robert's Rules of Order, Terry's motion could be amended.
Okay.
I think if County Council will allow that.
I, I thought what happened, did I miss that, that the motion was withdrawn?
No.
No, it was not.
It was not withdrawn. On some, it could be amended, some of these, I think that you need to, you know, it's up, up to the Planning Commission to figure out what you want on the conditions, but remember, there are some requirements on conditions, and, you know, you should look at what they're asking for and, and consider, you know, which reasonably, I suppose, I'm not sure if the word's proportionate, but, but consider cost factors, and, and their ability to control some things. One of the conditions mentioned that's a concern to me, for instance, is the one of testing water. Because then what? I mean, you know, in other words, if you get bad readings or something, you know, what are you going to do with it? Generally, when an applicant brings the application, what they have, what they have presented to you is what you're going on. And that well testing is a little tricky, and it, it has not. I, I just, I, I want to throw that out there because I know all kinds of tests, all kinds of things were thrown out there. Many of the opponents said, this isn't ready, I want to postpone this until all these tests are done, and these things are done, and this, and that's fine. I understand their concern, and they're trying to protect themselves. But the nature of a land use application generally is such that, you know, you're working with what you have, and you make a decision on whether it should be allowed on the evidence that you have before you. And some things that create evidence after the fact, like well testing, to me, are not appropriate. I don't know how you handle that, if you get bad tests or whatever. And there are DQ regulations.
Right, that's what I also wanted to stick, to point out, is that we, we have to, we have to stay in our lane. If we're talking about a quarry, and we says, well, I don't think the settling ponds are big enough, that, that's handled by. If we're talking about a quarry and we says, well, I don't think the settling ponds are big enough, that, that's handled by the GAMI and DEQ.
Okay.
And then also like, you know, all these trucks that come in have to be covered, the self haul. I, I'm not sure. I'd have to look at the ability to do that within an application like this. I, 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 you know, I haven't researched it, but that raises a red flag about their ability.
I would agree that those are all good ideas, but I also agree that, or also would like to point out that many of these things are covered by other legislation or other regulation. Particularly the, the well, the water testing and so forth. And also the, the covering of the trucks.
Okay, so Terry, are you, are you, is your motion still standing or are you amending it before I see what Misty's comment?
I think that should be handled as a separate item. Maybe I was a little bit hasty in bringing up the motion in an effort to move the proceedings along. But I think some of the items that Misty has brought up. I get it right, Misty, right?
No, Shailin.
Shailin, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay, so are you with, are, is your most, so you're, you want to with?
I'm not going to withdraw it if
You're going to withdraw now?
Commissioners feel that it's not encompassing enough, then they need to, to turn it down.
Okay, so there is no motion on the, on the floor right now, but Misty, go ahead.
I just wondered if it would be appropriate if we voted on some of this separately, like the time of day that they want to open and close. Is, could that be a separate vote or does it, is it all or nothing? And then if it's all or nothing, are we voting on what, are we going to vote on what they have already proposed that they want to do with or without all the conditions we just listed as possibles? I mean, I'm confused.
So, so it is, we are going to make one motion that either confirms or denies the application. And in their application, they specified what they wanted to do. Staff took a look at it and said, they offered advice on some, some things that we should consider when making our motion. Those are those items one through nine that we've been talking about. But we, there, it doesn't mean that that is just it. We can remove or add to that list of items to see if this application can be conditioned to fit and work in the community. That's kind of.
The, the, Madam Chair, I, I think Misty's, Misty's, and I can see the, her perplexed look and I, and I, and I'm, and I could see, and I think there's good reason for it because, yes, there, what we've done over the years and what makes sense is that at the end, there's one up or down motion or, or up and down vote on a motion. But, but it, it does make sense and in the past, a number of us have, that tended to make motions will try to keep, and, and I do this as staff, try to keep notes of what would be, you know, the list of, back again to those, the, 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 the conditions, at least we've put on the table already. But it does make sense, Misty, and, and I would say this to the others, is that you sort of, you parse these things out so that you have an individual discussion about, let's say, the hours. And then, you know, and then you break out those several other things that seem to be likely to end up in a motion or not, but, but sort of deal with them one by one to try to discuss them among yourselves, right? So you can get as close to a consensus as possible on each one of those. And then, you know, and then we'll take notes too. And, and then at, at the end of those, those several discussions, combine them into a single motion and, and see how it fares.
Right, so typically when we all quit talking about how we feel about all the different aspects, somebody will make a motion that where we, they think that the commission is comfortable with that we can vote on. We might not all agree on everything, but that's, you know. But so let's have some more discussion regarding, okay, so let's just take, let's take the hard one first instead of the other way around, the hours. I'm getting a feeling that there's a difference in opinion about the operating hours. Misty has stated, you know, she would feel comfortable with them setting their hours and Phil has and Terry and Phil have said that the hours they currently have are fine. Any other commissioners have a strong feeling for the operating hour portion of this?
And, and Shailin, in, in her discussion, if I, if I do, if I remember this correctly, Shailin, you were saying seven, you were going to add an hour on the, on the, on the, on the, is, is that, am I getting that correct? It would start at seven, but it, your, your point was you would give them another hour on, on the afternoon side, right? Was, did I, did I remember that correctly?
That's correct.
So we're a little bit all over. I haven't heard from from Dick. Do you have an opinion on the operating hours?
I agree with the addition of one hour as has been suggested.
Okay.
On the afternoon side.
Would be evening.
I would all. I would also agree with the additional hour. So it would give them 12 hours of operation.
Seven to seven. Okay, Misty?
I would just be concerned with that time added being in the evening since the most of the places that they're taking their, their commercial loads are opened much earlier and that's why they wanted the morning time instead of the evening time because their commercial loads were trying to get to the commercial locations. And they wanted to expand their hours earlier in the morning to provide for more trucks to be able to get to the commercial places such as Georgia Pacific, as an example, closes at three. Several of the other places closes at three and so later in the evening doesn't help them with their commercial. I would propose an hour earlier in the morning. If we didn't go clear to five, what about going to six? And going six to six, just so that they can accommodate their commercial part of their, of their job.
Okay, I guess my opinion on this is I am, I would be totally opposed to any earlier hours. I think that the neighbors have been pretty receptive and saying that they understand, you know, that we need this and they're used, 7:00 AM is maybe early for some people, but they, they seem to think being woken up at seven by the loud trucks, they can live with that. I would agree with Phil that earlier would, would be really a tough, tough cookie for me. So I, and as far as going later, I think that since the applicants themselves said that they could live within the current operating hours, that let's let them do that and if they need to come back in four or five years, we'll deal with it then. That's my feeling. Anyone else?
Yes, this is Terry and, and I agree with you Andrea that the hours, as they indicated in their testimony, are acceptable now, but they're looking out to the future and we can always accept another application for extended hours if, if we have the latitude to do that.
Okay, anyone else want to talk about hours?
You do have the latitude to do that. If they come back to you with a, another application down the road for that purpose, that, that is absolutely something that they could do. So that's not speculative, that, that's amen. They could do that.
I'm not familiar with the legislation on our, and our authorities on that one.
Yeah, no, they, there could, i- if, if they, if they, if you leave the hours the same and if they come back at a later time with another conditional use permit, that's absolutely okay for you to consider that at a later time.
Okay.
Okay.
Has everyone spoken on the hours that wants to weigh in?
Andrea, I think, I can support the seven to six that they currently have. It was just, the recommendation seven to seven was as an alternative to give them that additional hour of operating time.
I understand, okay.
I would like to point out one other consideration is that employee hours that work these, these types of jobs going over an eight hour day or eight and a half or nine hour day and scheduling people is one nightmare. I can tell you from personal experience having to schedule 21 shifts at times more than that.
Right.
It's, it, it can be a tough task. So apparently they're able to handle the, the seven to six. It just seems to be, in my opinion.
Right. Okay, anything else on hours? Okay, there's, I think there's a little more consensus towards keeping things the same. But we definitely disagree or it's not unanimous, let's say that. Okay, so the, the other staff recommendations, one through eight, anyone have any issues with the ones that are in there right now? And then we'll go over, discuss some of the things. Shailin? Okay, so one through eight, okay. So Shailin, I'm going to probably miss some of them. I was taking some notes, but so there, the paving and asphalt for any in, out and roads? I
Yeah. Yeah, I can repeat that. The, they have already in their application indicated that they were going to do some asphalt work on, on roads, but they didn't specify what and when. The there were a lot of comments about dust that dust plumes that were occurring with their current operation. And the county code 1.13156 indicates maintaining a durable and dustless weather resistant surfaces. And so I'm proposing that they expand their intent to as to asphalt certain areas of the roads to include all of the existing gravel and dirt roads and the proposed roads for the self, the self dumping areas and the, and of course, the aprons at the intersections to Anderson Creek Road that they asphalt all of that to address the dust issues.
I might want to point out this, Terry, that chip and seal would not be supportive of their large trucks. Phil, you may be able to help me out on that one. But I don't see it as, as a feasibility. And asphalt would be the only way to go. It, it actually would be cheaper because of the prep for chip and seal.
Yeah, that's what I've mentioned in, in my earlier comment was that it's not, it's not an acceptable alternative to.
Just a planter Jerry standpoint, considering the weight of the vehicles.
Yeah.
Okay. My screen is not big enough for me to go from your faces back to some of the exhibits and I wish I had printed them out now. I'm trying to see where they actually where the paving and I know that the stormwater collection was due to increased paving to deal with runoff and everything, but I'm, I don't have a picture in my head about exactly what is paved and what's not. Is any, anyone else, Misty?
The, so I was trying to find, it seems like there was quite a fit, quite a bit in the application about asphalt, but I'm, I'm trying to put my finger on it. I was hoping somebody else had paragraph number or something.
I think it's on the exhibit, so like their, their proposal diagram, but like I said, I'm on a laptop, so I'm a little bit in the dark at the moment, but anyone else have a handle on? A comment about the application of the, and the paved surfaces?
They're proposing 16,800 feet of asphalt paving, but they don't specify other than, let's see, where?
It says adjacent to the new building.
Yes.
But I'm trying to so that's, I'm trying to see on the exhibit here.
Right, but the existing roads, all of them are currently, are gravel or dirt.
I see.
I, I hear, this is Jerry, Jerry for the record, that basically maybe some comments have been put in the chat. The record is closed. So I understand why somebody, maybe the applicant or whoever's trying to put in chat, might want to have some input, but this is like when a jury is deliberating and comment is not allowed. So can everybody hear me?
Yeah, but I would disagree with that, Jerry.
Yeah. Don't look at the chat and, and as far as all of these conditions, just, you know, as you go through, you know, think about issues about is there another way to do it? Is, what's going to be the ca- likely cost? Is it cost prohibitive? So for instance, you know, I'm not saying this is the case, but you could impose certain number of conditions that would make it effectively a denial of the application because it's cost prohibitive. So just, just consider all, I, I don't take a position, any position for against the application. I'm just asking you to consider carefully all the conditions and make sure that conditions are supposed to be there to ensure compliance with the conditions of approval. And I think there's no exactions on behalf of the county. Have to look at that, but just, you know, just, just consider all the conditions as you go through it and the, and the practical effect. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay. Are there any other people with strong feelings that we should require or not additional paved surfaces? Any other commissioners have comments? Okay.
Not that I can see, I'm just going through it quickly.
Okay, Misty.
I don't see anything as to type of road construction on the drawings nor in the detailed descriptions.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify, nobody saw that they had exact lines. I just remembered there was a lot about asphalt, but I can't put my finger on exactly where they intended to put it. And nobody else saw that either.
And I recall this even from memory that, that in the drawings, there was substantially more asphalt surface there. I think, again, for the very reason that they're trying to space the vehicles, they, they need, you know, they're, they're moving the system down there, so certainly part of what Shailin is already talking about is, is anticipated in the, in terms of the additional, additional, there, there will be a lot, a lot more of the surfaces down there are going to be, are going to be asphalt. And I think one of the other kind of things that we don't know here is that if, if more asphalt's required, I hope that that doesn't create issues or then re, having to recalculate also the stormwater runoff because now you've, now you're doubling up or, or whatever potentially that, I mean, that's just the factor that I think that Jerry wants you to take into account too, that, that they, that might, that might push the the stormwater system to, to its limits as well, but.
Right.
It wouldn't make a difference whether it be chip and seal or asphalt. It's still an impervious surface, so therefore the amount of runoff would be the same.
On their Exhibit A of their medal, they, they do indicate, you can see where it says proposed asphalt paving. It's one solid area between Building Five and some of the bunkers or something. It is not the roads. It is, there's a little bit of paved parking.
Right.
Whatnot, so just to clarify.
I think we ought to leave it as the applicant has, we ought to vote as the applicant has, has said, because they have cost this out and also worked with all the storm drains and an engineer and all those things.
Okay.
Good point. Good point.
Okay, any other comments? Regarding that, okay. Um. The covering of uh, loads coming in and out, any comments on that? I'm, for self haulers, I, I don't know how you could do that, so I would not be personally.
I have to withdraw that suggestion based on what Jerry had mentioned earlier.
Okay. Um, then, um, the other thing was, uh, increasing the size of the berms, the vegetate, the, for the um, the last conditional use permit twen- in two thousand and seven. You were saying to increase some of the plantings with um, non-invasives and increasing the size of berms. Um.
Yeah, that, that, I don't know that we could make that into a condition. I, I don't, I, I don't know. Um, I know that was something that was mentioned in, in a couple of the uh, uh, the letters of opposition. Um, but whether or not, you know, uh, there is already existing native vegetation there and uh, whether that's something that we want to impose or not, I don't know. Um, I can certainly understand the Martins wanting that to be increased to help limit the noise and the dust and so forth. Um, that, but I just have to toss up to the, toss out to the rest of commissioners.
They can increase vegetation on their site, on their own property to reduce sound, or even put fencing or a variety of things on their property. I just don't know how we could.
Well, but we can, by the same token, um, they uh, shouldn't be have to bear the cost of increasing it to make it something that's, that's uh, protecting them when it's, it's being imposed on them by the transfer station.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may, I'm trying to, I'm channeling all the years that I was on the planning commission and, and you know, we're we're all struggling with, there are advantages to this format, right? With the electronic format and then how, you know, how it was done for years, and I, and I'm quite certain that we're gonna have a a hybrid approach to this as we go forward, so it'll be a, a mix of the two, but I, I just think in some of these cases to, it, it would be much, it would be more optimal. Uh, and and I'm not saying it's inappropriate to have this discussion now, but in, in a situation where we, we want to be able to you know, now we can't turn to the applicant and say, how practical is it to, you know, there, there's, at this point, when
I know, I'm gonna stop you right there, because I totally disagree with you.
Alright.
When, and when we're in a normal meeting, we should not be discussing with the people out in the audience once we have, we're in deliberations.
Oh, oh, and I completely agree with you. I'm just saying that a lot of times, if, if, if we have an app, i- i- in an ideal world, if we have an applicant, we have a in a complicated situation where they're trying to run, run something like this. It, it's just, it, and and I agree with you, we do, would not, during deliberation, you don't, I, I'm a hundred percent with you. That we don't interact with the applicant or the audience. What, amen, but in, I'm, my, the point that I'm struggling to make is that it's probably much better to try to have the dialogue occur when, when, you know, when, if we can in the future, when the applicant, and at the appropriate time, when the applicant's in front of us. So I'm a hundred percent with you on, don't, you know, we, we don't want to start interacting with them during deliberations, but my point is that it, and and I'll try to help that along as a staff in the future, is that we we front load those conversations when it is appropriate to talk to them, so we can get a better amount of feedback. That's really my point.
Good, yeah, because that's, that's the time.
We're on the same page.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So, um, we're, we're at where we're at right now.
Yep, yep.
But, um.
How about if we use, um, as a condition that they, that the transfer station continue to maintain the existing berms and vegetation, um, along that line, because they're, the, it's in the existing conditional use.
But I think that was part of the, um, their application, that they were going to do that. I don't think that, um, staff added that as some other conditions, but was it in the, in their application that they were going to be doing that? Am I not remembering that correctly?
Impression, there was some maintenance that was going to occur with those, uh, vegetations.
Well, it's, it's, it's surely not introducing something at the last minute that we don't have a chance to really engage them in a, in, in in a conversation about, so I, I, I
Yeah.
I sense from a staff perspective, that's much more on the table and, and and doable than, uh, and if, and if it's not being vegetated now, it should be, because
Yeah.
It just, that makes just common sense, but.
Right. Okay, was there anything else, um, Shaylan, that you had, um?
Yeah, I did want they, the, I wanted to put the uh, uh, condition in regarding, um, the, during the construction, the cleaning of mud and debris daily off of South Anderson Creek Road. And then after the completion of construction, uh, that the, um, debris along the boundaries to say, um, to the South Anderson Creek Road and uh, the mud and debris from storms be cleaned weekly or as needed after storms. That is, it's a fairly recent, you know, reasonable condition that that area has been cleaned off, because it affects the, anyone traveling on that South Anderson Creek.
Shaylan, are you su- are you suggesting at least, I'm trying to put some limits on this, like how far, you know? Uh, like, are you saying adjacent to their property or something like that, or?
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely, that's what I said, um, along the boundaries, the property boundary, um, and then, um, particularly during construction at the entry and exit points um, onto the property, because they're gonna be, in addition to the existing transit issues, you've also got, um, all the construction trucks and everything that's coming in to do all the construction that they're, that they're, they're, they're planning. So I think there needs to be a condition that says they have to clean up after themselves.
Um, Misty, oh, you, your hands back up again. Yes?
Isn't that, isn't the cleaning of, you know, when construction goes into the road, isn't that basic part of the code on a building permit, that they have to clean that up? And then I think after the construction, I don't know if um, I, I'm just, maybe I'm asking, um, a legal question here, but can we require as a conditional use for a private owner to maintain um, a road, especially a road adjacent to their property? That's like a state or county road. And can we really say that they have to go clean up mud after a storm, or, you know, what if the mud doesn't come from their property? What if it's you know, but, or, there's other people that use that road and it's, it's a county or state road? I don't know if we can regulate that.
Daph, do you, uh, can you tell us about, um, construct, if that's part of construction that they have to clean up during construction?
You know, I thi- I think some jur, some jurisdictions, especially urban jurisdictions, and I'm doing this from memory, have have literally like, you know, th- they require vehicles to go through, uh, you know, and be washed off or something like that, so it, it's certainly done in places, and and if I had my building official here, Al, I, Al Ames, I would say, Al, do do our bill, because I don't know whether our building permits ever have anything like that on there, it it, it certainly is a good neighborly thing to do, you know, to wash off the truck or and, and, and try to keep that, you know, because there's, and, and, and that's a limited time anyway, that the construction is taking place, you know, it's not a chronic, ongoing, ongoing situation for them, so.
And what about the, about ongoing, the ongoing road thing? Is that done anywhere? Here?
Well, I'm, I, and, and I'm not aware of that, that doesn't mean that it's inappropriate or unlawful, but, but that's why I was quick to say, well, wait, wait a minute, or are we just talking about you know, adjacent to the, you know, to try to kick, create some reasonable sideboards on such a thing where um, you know, if, if it's near the facility or not, and, and, or at, at least, because I think Shaylan, you were saying, and, and, and your motion contemplated and, and, and thought that you were talking about adjacent to the property itself, right? That was the
Yeah, particularly the entry and exit points. Um, I can, you know, do without the uh, um, following completion of this, of the construction as far as following up on that. But I definitely think the restriction on, on the construction, on cleanup from the construction, because they are the ones who are depositing it into a public road and having mud and dirt and debris on a public road is a, is a hazard to the general public use.
But my concern, and again, it's a case of first impression, I certainly haven't had time to research it. But it seems like it's easy, I mean, I don't know about easy, but generally allowed that you can put conditions on, you know, on the use, on, on the subject property, but once you go beyond the subject property, I think it gets a little tricky, um, as far as that goes. So I, I, I'm not sure that I would recommend a condition that transcends the subject property.
I have to disagree with you, Jerry.
But you sure you can?
Yeah, I, I do, because, um, the subject property is the one who is depositing the dirt and mud and so forth onto the public road base, and therefore they should be responsible for removing it during the construction period when they're depositing.
Whoever owns the public roads probably has control over the activities on the public roads, and the public whoever owns the public roads may have an issue with the applicant here if there is a problem, and that could be handled in a different way. But I would say that if someone else maintains a road and they don't want the applicant to be messing with it, I think they have jurisdiction over that road, the public entity.
So, something we should, should, we would, we would need to confirm then with our roads department, whether that is acceptable or not.
We'll have to see also how other commissioners feel about strongly about. Yes, Phil, um, Phil, you have your hand up, you're on mute.
Yes, uh, while I think all these comments are useful and thoughtful, I think it's outside the scope of the planning commission, and I think I think we need to just vote. And, and, uh, I mean, we can discuss all the what ifs and all this sort of stuff, but you know, DEQ follows procedures and, and the county follows different procedures, and there's ways of people to make their feelings known if there are any problems associated with the site, so. Um, I think the planning staff is, is figured this out very well, and I'm ready to vote.
Okay, thank you. Um, we don't have anything to vote on currently. We were just going through the
I, I thought we had a motion.
No, he, uh, Terry withdrew his motion.
Okay, I, I
Yeah. Are there any other comments before someone rushes out with the motion?
Yes, I would like to say an item here. I, I think Commissioner Stratton has a, a point, frankly, I, I don't know any source of debris that's hauled of any kind, where it isn't scattered around the entrance or nearby to a facility such as this. And if there's a way that we can do it legally, to put some kind of responsibility, pinpoint that to this, to the to the person asking for permission to build this, if there's any way legally that that can be done, I think that it should be considered.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Anybody else?
There is a, yes, um, there is a provision in our code. Um, it's under environmental health and safety, that actually addresses this. Um, it's six point one zero, that litter results, that results from a facility operation must be controlled such that the entire disposal site and adjacent lands are maintained virtually free of litter at all times. Any debris from the facility must be retrieved and pop- properly disposed of as soon as possible that operational day. So it really is specific on this, and the applicant actually did include that in their um, their application, so.
But, but that's a different part, that's a different part of Lincoln, because I'm gonna lean on Jerry here then, right? And thank, thank you, Liz, for bringing that up, and it I, I'm not surprised there's, there, that there is an or, a, a Lincoln County ordinance about that, like a noise ordinance though is is external to our code, but, but Jerry, is that? So if I understand it correctly, that's under chapter six, not chapter one, which is our land use code, but it's still, but Liz, is your point is that, that, that already applies? That, that
Yes, that would be, that would be my point.
Duty to do that anyway.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, right, and I think that's really important, that's really important, that that's a co- a contribution to the discussion. And, and I think certainly during the course of this conversation, uh, the Frenches will, will hear that loud and clear, that 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 existing duty is there under, none of the land use code, a different part of our code. And therefore, if, if there's a lot of trash out there, they would be in violation of that particular ordinance, if, if, if that's going on, so.
Which, which one? Which one were you looking at, Liz? Six what?
Um, I'm looking at, it's under six point zero, and the section is section B, environmental health and safety.
Just a second.
Six point one zero.
Oh, six point one, let's take a look here.
I
That doesn't translate, and what I'm, I'm looking at the code here. I'm not following you.
It's actually what the applicant included in their application, so I don't have the code. Actually, I just have what the application.
Which is why you have that.
This chapter, chapter addresses county road, so if something is something different, or, um,
That's probably our solid, you know, because we've got a whole bunch of solid waste stuff in a different part of our code.
Yeah, I don't know if you're talking about solid waste or what, is six, chapter six is roads and the surveyor. Anyway, uh,
Yes.
We, we can, you know, I'd, I'd say go ahead and uh, make your motion, whatever it is, whatever you're happy with, and if there's an issue about one of the conditions, I'll look at it from a legal standpoint. There's no receiving input from the public or whatever, the record is closed. Uh, if there's an issue about a condition not being lawful or something, I, I can look at it between now and the time that you're set to approve something, but, um, you know, like I say, you probably need to move forward with something that you're happy with.
Okay, Misty?
I, I think he answered my question, so.
Okay, great, terrific. All right, is there anything else, or is there any motions stirring about?
I have one more comment. It's actually, I brought it up earlier, but I'm gonna bring it up again. We talked about paving, uh, the onsite, um, roads. Um, Lincoln County Code one point one three one five, section six um, requires, uh, I believe it was actually a condition in their existing uh, conditional use permit um, to maintain a durable and dustless weather resistant surface. And their current surfaces are gravel and dirt, which do not provide a dustless surface. So, that, that was the, the background for requesting that they asphalt their, uh, their roads.
All right.
Driveways, roads, whatever you want to call them.
Okay.
Like to ask, ask a question at this point in time, because some of these, uh, things we're talking about actually get into the building permit uh, process. And, uh, shouldn't that be, some of these be considered during the building permit application? I'm assuming to do some of this work, they'll be required to do a building permit, pretty extensive one.
Well, the, the building permits are really gonna cover the structures, and having, and, 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 and the planning side covers adequate parking and everything, the as you know from our previous conversation, the improvements to the entrance, uh, i- if you make a positive motion to approve the, the, uh, enlargement and, and of the facility, they'll be worked out with our public works department later. So, um, and, and maybe, and I, and I'm gonna profess my ignorance here, Chi- we, we're already talking about chip and seal, but is that, is that a, is that a, is that ultimately a dustless? I'm trying to understand what that's exactly, that's, that's something I'm trying to understand what that's exactly. That's, that's something between pavement and, and gravel, right? It's a more temporary surface, or?
Not necessarily. But chip and seal is something you notice if you like to ride a bicycle, because it's not real. But it is, you know, I don't know a lot about it, but anyway, it, it is a certain type of paving. And it's a little rough if you're riding a bicycle.
And fall off.
Yeah, you don't want to fall off.
Okay, Shaylan, you wanted to say something else again?
No, huh?
Okay, your hand is still up, and now Misty, your hand's up. Misty?
Oh, I just, so I, I guess I'm asking is, you know, we, we, we assume that asphalt is dust free, but there may be other methods to make it dust free or whatever. And so if they have to do that as part of the, the standard code, we have to make it a separate part of this, this application.
Okay. I hear you. Anyone else?
Normally speaking, on construction, paving is a part of the total building project within a given geographic or geographical area, whether it be residential or airports. And I say airports because that's where I remember it being a, a huge issue.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe I'm less, I'm less in, in understanding of it, because we just deal with so much residential construction that they're, you know, with, in the unincorporated areas of the county that we, we mostly focus our attention on structures, but I'm not saying that's not the case.
Well, with residential, you pretty much have a a set pattern, if you will, and a standard, maybe not codified, that of, of pavements that are leading to a house or a resident, as far as resident.
What, what, at least in Lincoln County, and, and again, we're a rural county, if, how, what, what kind of driveway or, you know, a- after you meet certain standards on certain, you know, width and this and that, and on, on some applications for subdivisions, then after that, whether they're paved or not, really, really is up to the applicant's choice on that. But, so I, I don't want to muddle up this conversation anymore than it is.
Okay. So where have gone through, Misty, did you have something?
I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the application as submitted.
With any of the staff recommendations?
With, with the conditions, with the conditions.
With the conditions.
As listed, but leaving the time as it is. In other words, not.
Leaving the time as it is, with the conditions as, as recommended by the staff, leaving the time as is.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion, Phil.
Okay, Phil's seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, I think we ought to do, the times as separate. It seems to be a large issue.
Say that again.
I don't think it should be included in this motion, but we can vote the motion down and do it again.
I'm sorry, what, what did you say at the very beginning? I didn't quite hear that.
I don't think the, the proposed times are appropriate for this particular project. I think that the, the times that are established currently are more appropriate for the.
Okay, but isn't that, isn't that Misty, your, your motion was.
That is your motion, that is.
Keep, keep the hours seven to six, right? That's the existing hours, right?
All the existing things on the one through nine, exactly like they are on the one through nine.
So Terry, so Terry, Misty's saying the hours would stay the same, so that the, the Frenches wouldn't open up longer on either side of the.
That needs to be clarified because.
Okay, I'm clarifying that. I, I'm redoing my whole motion. I wish we approved the conditional use permit as, as submitted with the recommendations of staff and one through nine, with remaining the time from seven to six as noted.
Monday through Saturday.
I'll second that.
Okay. Well, Phil had it seconded. Phil, I don't know.
Yeah.
It matters.
Phil's got it.
Is that okay, Phil?
That's correct. I second that.
Great, okay. Let's, let's call the roll to vote. Call for the vote. Staff?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Fox?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Spomack?
Yes.
Commissioner Cutler?
Yes.
Commissioner Stratton?
No.
Commissioner Bougainhagen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion passed and the application is approved with those conditions that we just outlined. Thank you, everyone, for a very long and thorough discussion of everything. And looking at all the issues with that.
And thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I suspect we're going to be, you know, given what's going on with COVID, we, we might be back in the courthouse before too long here for you know, for, for normal meetings, although I know that right now, the cat, the courthouse, they're actively pursuing getting a, some electronic enhancements done to the courthouse meeting room that would allow for, for this, this hybrid approach, right? Where, where and I think this is the direction things are going, where, where bodies like this would meet in person again, like we've done for all those years, but there would be that, that tie to the internet and, and the ability to have people watch and, and participate electronically as well. So I'll, I'll, of course, we'll have more information as that comes, as that come, as that, as that spools out.
Great. Well, interesting times. We'll, we'll deal with that when it's, if it wins, if and when it happens.
All right.
We also have a one other item, and that is to approve the draft minutes from back on the January 10th, 2022 meeting for case file 14 CPC 21. Is anyone want to make a motion to approve those minutes? You should have received them.
There's one small addition for, and, and you've only had them since like late last week, because I produced them and I, I gave them to you in draft, but Jerry Herbage has pointed out that if you're, if you feel inclined to, to go ahead and approve those minutes, we are going to make, Jerry had pointed out that we need to put those minutes would be changed to add the actual names and how people voted on that, on that, on that meeting on the 10th then. So that, that, that's something that Jerry picked up when he saw the draft minutes. So if, if someone's going to make a motion to approve the minutes, please include as amended per Jerry Herbridge's instructions.
Okay, so have we ever done that before? In the minutes, actually, who voted for what? I just thought it was like, it either passed and the, the score, but not who was who.
It can say, sometimes you might say it passed unanimously or something, but ORS Chapter 192 says that you have to, for anybody that's like 25 or fewer people, you have to indicate how the vote went, how each person voted.
Okay.
And so that's just, I looked at, glanced at the minutes, saw it didn't have it, and also asked, I think I'm introduced as the county council, and of course, I'm just assistant county council, so maybe I could say that. But that's not, not so important. But if, if we could just record the vote or subject to the vote, you know, you know, what you have there.
Well, and Madam Chair, if we, if we, if we haven't been doing it over the years, and we should have, then let, let's start doing that. So, you know.
Yeah, yeah, something new. All right. Okay, so would anyone want to make a motion as just proposed to approve the, the draft minutes? Not everyone at once.
I would make a motion, we approve the minutes and amend them with the commissioner's vote.
I would second this, Terry.
Okay, and let's just do a hand wave, except for those on audio, you're going to have to tell us those who also approve the minutes. Okay, those abstaining? Liz, what, what say you?
Yes, approve.
Okay, so then it is unanimous. The minutes are approved. All right, any planning commission concerns? What's next up? We'll have a, I guess, some kind of meeting to approve these minutes and the other minutes.
Yeah.
You need to approve the written order.
A written order.
And so you'll, you'll need to agree, why don't you agree on a date now with the motion when you'll reconvene to adopt written order? And I think it should be, because remember, in land use, an oral decision is not a land use decision. Land use decision, it's subject to appeal and all that, is the written decision. And so staff could tell you, give you a good idea about how long it might take, but I'm sure that they'll need at least a couple of weeks to probably put that together, I would guess.
Staff, you want to tell us when would be a appropriate time for for this?
So Jerry, Jerry, you, you think, if we, if, if we put it three weeks out, that might see, in this case too, we, we, we want to make, you know, we, the, the applicants thus far have not been represented by legal counsel, and usually the prevailing, you know, so it's going to, we're going to have to sort of work, work that through with the Frenches about getting, getting, getting that done. So there's a, there's a little bit of uncertainty there compared to under other circumstances, so.
So today's the 7th. How about we convene, is the 28th available? And we're, we got a, yeah, March, we had a 60-day extension, I think, from the applicant.
Why don't we use that as a working date, Jerry, and then, and then we'll make sure that we communicate with the chair and others about, about how that date's looking and, and how those, those, the, the findings and order are coming together.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's fine, but if something came up, I, I think it would be better if we just had a motion to convene on, on that date, if that works.
Yeah, yeah. Just, but then we'll still, we'll still make sure we're, 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 we're in touch with you guys to see how realistic that is and how it's coming together.
I mean, we could do it in two weeks. I think that's rushing things, as the way thing, I've got all the workload, so on, but okay.
So is that 28th date then? That's a.
March 28th, Monday. And, and Jerry would like to have a motion that we are going to reconvene on the 28th of March to go over the final, written final order.
And vote on the, and vote on the order.
Go ahead and make the motion that we convene, reconvene on the 28th of March to approve the final motion.
That's at 7:00 PM regular time.
Right.
Daylight saving time.
Oh, you're right. It'll be different.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
That's Shaylan is seconding it. Okay, all those in favor of the 28th, wave your hand. Liz, let us know.
Yes.
Yes, okay, unanimous. Okay, any other planning?
Will you let us know if that can be in person?
Oh, sure. I, you know, that's a little, that's a little short for being in person based, but, but who knows? It could be, but and, and I'm going to let you out, I promise this, if, 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 if we're going back to in-person meetings, you'll be, you'll, as soon as I know that, I'm going to send you guys an email like immediately saying, so you've got, so you do understand that that's, that's changing. And, but again, I think we're going to be trying to keep this hy- this hybrid thing going, so.
And, and one of the reasons for the 28, three weeks out is you need to have this in advance. So in other words, we can't just get the, do up the order the afternoon of the 28th and expect that this will work. So we'll, we'll do it up in advance and you'll have it in advance and we will go from there.
And, and of course, it's a terribly important part of these proceedings, just, you know, just like remember the last, with Goal 18, right? Actually, that there was one whole, you know, meeting and we felt, you know, so relieved we're at that point, but then developing the findings and everything like that. But, and, and I don't think that this is going to be anything on that magnitude, but but in terms of appealable, that, that's really what ultimately is, if, if people are upset or they want to appeal, that they're, they're going to be, people are going to be appealing over that document. So it really, it really needs, we, we, of course, always have to be very careful how we do that.
Okay. Terrific. Any other planning commission concerns? All right. Well, thank you all again. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.